I call to order this regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission on Monday, May 9, 2022, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge. Clerk Baugh, could you please take the role?
Commissioner Allsager?
Here.
Commissioner Asman?
Here.
Commissioner Agaid?
Here.
Commissioner Ronan?
Here.
Commissioner Bott?
Here.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Here.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we have a quorum. We'll continue the meeting. Today, we are administering the oath of office to Commissioner Asman. Clerk Baugh, you have the floor. Commissioner Asman, I need you to step forward.
How far forward?
Like way up here.
Right here, good.
Yeah, raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
You solemnly swear.
that I, Brian Asman,
And I, Brian Asman,
will support the constitutions of the United States of America
Support the constitution of the United States of America.
and the state of Michigan
And the state of Michigan.
and the charter of the city of Mount Pleasant.
The treasure
Charter.
Charter, sorry, for the city of Mount Pleasant.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
Then I will faithfully discharge the duties of city commissioner.
On behalf of all the citizens of the city
On behalf of all the citizens of the city.
to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
All right, congratulations, Commissioner Asman.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation by Christopher Germaine, who is a senior RRC planner, redevelopment-ready communities, and Stephanie Pena? Pena? Is that correct?
She couldn't make it.
Okay, she couldn't make it. She was a redevelopment-ready committee, uh, communities planner. Their presentation is on the Winter Strategies Action Plan for the city. I give you the floor, Christopher.
Great, thank you, everyone. It's good to see a number of you again. It's actually been about three, three and a half years, maybe almost four, since we certified the city. So the last time that I was here, I'll speak with you all formally in this capacity, was actually during that certification where I promised I wouldn't abandon Jacob until you got all the way through. So he's very convincing, as a number of you know. So Stephanie Pena, who couldn't be here with us tonight, is actually your redevelopment-ready communities planner now. And I'm actually really thrilled that this is my last public event as an RRC planner. So I am moving to Marquette in a few weeks, which makes me incredibly excited, although sad to leave MEDC. So it's exciting that my last project I get to work on is Winter Cities. As someone who's obviously moving to the UP, I'm a huge fan of winter. And so what we've discovered over the last several years through an economic development perspective is that Michigan's really leaving an entire season on the table, right? We all love fall, spring, and winter, and then we just shut down, go winter. Especially now in state where the climate, snow, cold, it's not as reliable to plan like consistent winter activities. And so we were looking at it during the pandemic and like, well, what are we going to do about this, right? We can no longer afford to just give up an entire season. So MEDC, back when the pandemic first hit, created a Winter Cities guide. And then the following year, this past winter, we took that up to the next level by actually working with two communities to implement that guide and provide a strategy and an action plan towards implementing winter activities. So Mount Pleasant was one of those communities that participated. We asked all of our RRC-certified communities, which as of now is about 60 communities, roughly give or take one or two, as well as our Main Street communities that are select their master level if they were interested. So 15 communities applied. Out of those two, we selected Niles and Mount Pleasant. So you're in good company. We chose each community for different reasons. But one of the reasons we chose Mount Pleasant was actually because you presented a really strong steering committee. So we were convinced that we weren't just going to focus traditionally on our normal focus of downtown on this project, but we wanted to focus on the community as a whole. And so your steering committee allowed us to do that, in particular with the city's focus on recreation and community and families here as well. So just want to say thank you to everyone who's listed up there in much smaller writing, as all the MEDC folks who were also in on this project. There was a huge group of us, and this was a first-time thing for us, which also meant that we provided this at no cost to the city, since we were still figuring it out ourselves. So the process was pretty quick and short for a, for a planning project, to be really honest with you. So we issued those calls in July. We had selected folks by August, and we were in it by September, really digging in. The original intention was to be done before Christmas hit. That was a little too ambitious for us, unfortunately, but we did get done right around the end of January, early February, after we had a couple of versions of the drafts. So I don't want to dive in super deep into the strategy, although I will say it's only about 20 pages, which is really short for a planning strategy. So we really aim to keep it something you could use on a daily basis or yearly basis you're walking through. But there are a number of highlights that we just wanted to point out to you that you all have as a community here. One of the things we're recommending around focusing around skating and sledding, this is the one wintertime activity where, yes, we know it's up on the, on the cold, in the snow, but you can make those things, you can store those things when they do happen, and you can do pretty like quick and cheap upgrades to make those at least possible during the winter. And so you have a lot of assets around this potentially. So focusing on those, in particular at the Mission Creek Park and working on the Island Park and that skating rink, excuse me, is a real key focus area of this plan, and quite frankly, something the city was already looking at before we looked at the strategy. So really just backing up the good work your staff was already doing around that work. Equipment sharing is another one that was actually really unique to the city of Mount Pleasant. So some of the other cities we talked with, you know, who applied, and the Niles that we worked with, they don't, none of them have a university. None of them have some of the resources that you have as a community, a university, in particular with an outdoor recreation department, which is pretty rare indeed. So being able to tap into that and share some equipment for folks who otherwise couldn't afford some of that Winter City equipment, which can be really expensive, right? Skis, snowboards, snowshoes, cleats, all that kind of fun stuff can get really pricey. And so finding a way to share that and get other folks who otherwise couldn't afford this stuff involved is a real potential opportunity here for you as a city. The Town Center project, which we're obviously sitting just a few blocks from, is another key asset. I will say, comparing, you know, to Niles, they had a established downtown gathering space already, much like Broadway when it's closed down, but it was a little more permanent. So what you all are doing around the Town Center has the potential to provide this all-seasons opportunity for public gathering that'll, it won't have to depend on closing a road every single year, right? It'll just always be there as an asset to the community. So as you're designing that, certainly think about those, those four seasons and how you can keep using that during the winter. And then lighting might seem a little obvious here, right? You go downtown, you see all the lighting all over downtown, especially in the winter. We know there's, there's some concerns around that in terms of the maintenance and the cost for that, but lighting is especially important. So you have that tradition that already exists here in the city. And so we encourage you to keep that going, although you might need to do it in a different way, right? Maybe a more financially sustainable way, and that's okay. Thinking about colors, thinking about locations, thinking about how you like to see, not even just downtown, but even in your neighborhoods and things like that. So you'll see some of those recommendations in there as well. So those are the top four. And then what I would like to do is just kind of go through some of the overall themes that we have within the plan. And you'll see the bullet points in here. If you have any specific questions, we can talk about any of these. But we had a couple of general recommendations for you really quick. One, which is just talking about winter every year. We know no one wants to talk about it, especially today. I'm really sorry to be here talking about winter today. It's a really bad choice, but it is what we, it is what we got. So, but talk about it every year, get people together, because there are challenges related to winter. There are opportunities for folks, and sometimes you just need to talk it through and see where were the challenges last year? What can we do this year? You can time it however you think you need to do it, but especially with this strategy now in place, we encourage you to have that conversation annually. And there's a couple of other general recommendations on there as well, updating the plan based on those workshops, and incorporating winter into your social media and your communication strategies. Winter exists, whether we want to admit that it does or not. So focusing it and trying to change the narrative really changes how you think about it as well. So one other key focus area, it was enhanced outdoor activity, sort of a no-brainer in Mount Pleasant, right? Like, I got here an hour early just so I could walk around in your parks today, right? And go through downtown, and it's such a pleasure to do recreation in this city. And so use those assets, you know, to your advantage. Study how you can incorporate more winter, work on the ice skating rink. There was some talk about adding fire pits to downtown from Midland. So I'll say, we have them, right? So now you guys got to get them. It's kind of how that works. So you got to keep up right over there with Midland over there. But they are also very helpful in a lot of other communities as well. So something to think about, just in terms of that general enhanced outdoor activity. Non-transportation is another area that we focus on because it gets forgotten a lot in winter, right? It's hard to plow sidewalks sometimes. It's hard to plow the bike paths, things like that. But you take people who otherwise would walk and bike and everything else during the summer, and you put them back in their cars, right? And you create the pollution and the traffic and the unhealthiness of all of that. So if there are ways to better understand how to plow priority routes or to get neighbors together, just find a neighborhood way to clear the sidewalks or create the bike routes, something that you should focus on. So our main recommendation here is simply to pay more attention to that, you know, and to try to organize some type of audit, which is something that MEDC could actually help you do as an RRC-certified community later on, if you needed some funds to do that. So safety, comfort, and vegetation, this is kind of a catch-all in urban planning for just thinking about color and vegetation and how your buildings look. I always use this example from Lansing. Everyone laughs at this building, to be honest with you. In the summer, it looks a little goofy. I actually used to live in it. And, but in the winter, this is the only thing you love in downtown Lansing. Everything else is gray and bleak, and I loved my time there, but this is where you go in the winter because it's got that color and that design around winter. It was sort of an accident for them. The developers just happened to do it that way. But it's really changed their minds about that. So encourage you to think about that. Look at your zoning code to see if maybe you prevent this type of stuff. Some people unintentionally prevent this type of winter design that you might just want to take a look at. Lighting, we already talked about, so find a way around that wall of lights. Incorporating in that winter residential lighting contest, in particular post-holidays, winter goes past December. As a matter of fact, it's the worst past December, and so you really do want to find ways to make that better throughout. And that includes getting people out of downtown, honestly, which is a little weird for us to say as community development. But get into your neighborhoods and get out there and see your neighbors and walk around, put some lighting in there. Speaking of downtown, you know, a handful of recommendations specific, excuse me, to downtown, around the initial winter market, kind of assessing how things went. Think about winter-focused pop-up events, too, like hot chocolate nights, scavenger hunts, outdoor yard games. If any of you have been to Grand Rapids this winter, you'll see that they did a lot of that type of stuff, right? So you could literally do a scavenger hunt with your cell phone all through winter and get entered in the contest, and it got people out. I lived downtown, and they were everywhere when it wasn't like 10 below zero, right? If it was at least above zero, people were out there doing this stuff. And so people will react to this stuff. And then a big one around storefront activation for business owners. Sometimes activating that storefront takes a different skill set and some different thoughts in the winter, and so thinking about that. And then the last focus area in yours was actually Mount Pleasant-specific because, as I mentioned earlier, it's hard down here, right? To count on snow and cold. Sometimes we have incredibly warm winters with no precipitation. So we threw out a handful of recommendations of things to think about with your recreation department and with your partners in the community about things you can do during the winter, now that we can all start to gather indoors again, you know, at least a little more comfortably. So think about these for next winter and how you can just get people out of their homes and doing other things. So the plan is, at its core, it's an action plan. So you'll see up here a number of things. You have tasks, you have the subscriptions. We focus on adding leads, costs, potentials, and potential funding sources as well. I will say, we had timelines in here. I think we were a little pressed to get those in there, and so we were asked by the city to take those out. It is bad planning practice, to be honest with you, to do that, but we wanted to work with the city. And so we encourage you, once you get more familiar with these, to consider adding those back in to the strategy, at least prioritizing high and low in terms of like priority areas, even if you don't get, put the years back in there. And in terms of next steps, we're really handing it over to you all as a community, which actually we did a few months ago. And so we encourage you first and foremost to take a look at it, have your steering committee deep dive into it, share it with your partners who weren't on that steering committee. And most importantly, don't be afraid to make immediate adjustments. We know some of this stuff probably happened between when we gave you the plan and today. Some of it may have fallen off the table between when we gave you the plan today, and that's okay. Every plan kind of lives and it breathes, and that's the intention of this strategy. And we want you to, then after you've done that, to move into implementation. You're going to find those partners in there. I know one of the other things on your agenda tonight is an application to some funding for MEDC to actually implement one of these ideas in this winter strategy. And so move right into that, start doing that work, continue those existing efforts, and then, like I said, assess, adjust, and continue after that. So don't let this thing just kind of sit on a shelf. We'll, we'll keep gently reminding you. This project is being handed off to someone else internally to keep it going after I leave. So we'll definitely be checking in to see how it goes. And then lastly, I always like to throw these out just here, just in case anyone's interested in this Winter City stuff in general. There's a whole bunch of work on there. A lot of it's within the last year or two because obviously folks have taken a much greater interest in it in the last year or two. So if you want to see maybe how you can change the plan to better fit Mount Pleasant specifically, or if you're like, where the heck did MEDC come up with this idea? Are they crazy? You can take a look at this type of stuff and see what is out there. And that's that. Trying to blast through it because I know no one wants to be inside today, so.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions? Commissioner Boish.
This might be better for Ryan Longore, who I know was on the steering committee, but I had some curiosities about the extension of the 5K obstacle race because I don't think it was executed in the same manner this year where you... Do you know if he was planning on moving a different direction with that or whether or not it was just?
I don't know, is Ryan?
I don't think Ryan's here.
I don't see him.
Yeah. Because I myself thought that was a great event, and then I think they kind of toned it down a little bit, and I kind of wanted to hear a little bit more about why that was.
Yeah, that was one of those ones where it was a pretty well-established thing that was really happening, right? So a really important thing that we always do during the plans is figure out what's working, right? So you need to keep doing that. So I don't think they had deep conversations about that.
They turned it into a traditional 5K. There wasn't an obstacle course this year, I believe.
Well, that sounds less fun.
It's totally less fun, yeah. I didn't do it.
We'll tell them that, but yeah, there wasn't an official recognition.
And I don't have any information about why it was done. I was actually on the Parks Commission before, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, those are the kind of things, right, that you can assess from year to year, if it did it work the same way when you turn it into a 5K? Should it go back?
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good question, though.
Bill, do you have something to add to that?
Hey, Bill. Thanks, Chris. This year, the Recreation Department decided to take a little hiatus from the 5K as we knew it before. The, the, you know, the Adventure Obstacle Course, so to speak, and they're evaluating whether or not, or how to bring it back in subsequent years. I think with the addition of the building next door and changing some of the venues, they were just kind of wrapping their head around how can make, how we can make that successful. But, you know, man versus mountain, hopefully will be coming back in subsequent years as they evaluate what's best, what's the best way of doing that and making it successful again, so. So have no fear. You'll probably hear more about that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Excellent. Sweet. I'll come back down for that. That sounds fun.
Commissioner Allsager?
This is probably more of a question for Bill, too, but when the CMU Rec Department years ago moved from Finch over to the new SAC building, they got rid of all their equipment. So as far as I know, they don't have any equipment right now to rent out. That's something that's going to have to be worked on, I imagine.
Okay, I don't have any direct information on that, but we'll investigate.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say how impressive it was, Chris. A very nice job. I love the idea of involving the university and local partners and very well-thought-out and working with everybody together in the city, capitalizing on an environmental thing that takes place in the city. I mean, it was very nicely done. I can see why you're heading on.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I had a really incredible team behind us as well, so.
Any further questions?
No, but thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you all.
All right, so May 15 through May 21, 2022, is National Public Works Week. I'm happy to read a proclamation recognizing our Public Works Department and all they do for the city. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Mount Pleasant. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works and Public Works professionals who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other facilities essential to these services. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens and civic leaders of Michigan to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of Public Works and related programs in their respective communities. And whereas 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, I, Amy Perschbacher, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby designate the week of May 15 through the 21st, 2022, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to recognize the substantial contributions made by our Public Works professionals to protect our local and national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand in the great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this ninth day of May, 2022. Thank you. And if anyone is ever interested in finding out what the city does, we do have a wonderful citizens academy that definitely works to inform everyone in the city how our city works. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment on agenda items. We have, have we received emails for public comment?
No, you're not.
Okay. If you wish to, to make a public comment, please up to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining the meeting by Zoom, you can use your raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you're recognized, you'll be moved in so that you can be heard and make your comment. Please state your name and address before your comment. We do have quite a few public hearings tonight. I'm assuming many of you are here for the public hearings. If you want to wait until we have the public hearing, then you'll have time to speak at that time. Yes. Yes, for agenda items.
Hi, I'm Kelly Fountain. I live at 811 South Franklin. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the unlimited marijuana, marijuana stores or shops that you want to add or take the caps off of. I think a couple of years ago, we had a vote on it, and we were down to only three for the town, if I remember right. And it was supposed to be 10 or three, and the vote was for three. And I'm not really sure why you want to take the cap off of it. And if you do take the cap off and it's unlimited, how many, where are they going to be put at? You know, are they going to be like down by the college? Are they going to be down in residential areas? I'm not really sure. Need more information on that before, or at least another vote, maybe, down the line, another special election or something on that, I think, before we just take the caps off and just have shops everywhere. So that's my, so thanks.
Thank you. We will have an open public hearing on the marijuana issue tonight. If you'd like to speak now or you can wait until then. Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward on a agenda item? All right, I'm going to close the public comment. Manager dissents, please review the receipts and petitions and communications.
Receipts? Receipts of?
Oh, we can't hear him, Steve.
Testing? Hello, can you hear me now?
Nope. Try again?
There we, hang on. There we go. Perfect. All right. Receipts of petitions and communications includes the city manager report on pending items, monthly report on police-related citizen complaints received, minutes of the Economic Development Corporation Brownfield Redevelopment Authority from November, minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals from January, minutes of the Airport Joint Operations and Management Board from March, resignation of Jennifer Jones from the Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire 12/31/2024, correspondence received regarding Broadway Central, of which at the time this packet went out, there was eight. Other correspondence received since the distribution of your packet has been placed at your seats.
All right, thank you. Okay, for the consent calendar, are there any items the commission would like removed? Manager dissent, can you please read the consent calendar?
Consent items include approval of minutes from the special meeting held April 18, 2022, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held April 25, 2022, consider award of contract for 2022 well number six rehabilitation project to Peerless Midwest for $46,406, consider award of contract for building crack seal and masonry repair to National Restoration and approve a budget amendment of the same, which is a contract for building repairs of $114,000 and requires a budget amendment of $14,000. Consider resolution extending conditional approval of a medical marijuana Class C grow operation for Absolute Royale Inc. Consider resolution extending conditional approval of an adult-use marijuana Class C grow operation for Absolute Royale Inc. Consider setting a special hearing for follow-up discussion on goals and objectives for Wednesday, June 15, 2022, at 5:30 PM, and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this consent calendar?
I saw.
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, before we move on to the public hearings, I'm going to do a bit of explanation. My understanding is that there's been a little bit of confusion by the way I ask for questions, then the motion, then discussion, and then followed by a vote. Questions are, are asked prior to the motion because that's for clarification from the staff, okay? Then a motion comes, somebody makes the motion, we have a second, and then we have discussion. During the discussion, we can amend the motion if it comes up, we can ask other questions, but most of it is stating how we're feeling about moving forward and what we'd like to do. All right? Every, once every commissioner has had a chance to discuss the motion, and then a vote will be taken. So now we're going to move into the first of five public hearings. This is item 17 on agenda. We have our, this is on the Community Development Block Grant Water-Related Infrastructure Program Application. Manager dissents, please give an overview to the commission.
So, the city staff is applying for a $2 million grant from the state for funding to support costs related to the Phase Two upgrades for our Water Resource Recovery Facility. The city is able to maximize points on the grant application by contributing 25% or more of the project costs of the total project. The project will include clarification and infiltration upgrades as part of the Phase Two plan. We estimate this portion of the project will cost $3 million, $90,000 and require a city contribution of $1 million, $90,000. After the public hearing, the city commission is asked to approve the attached resolution authorizing the grant application and funds for this project. I do want to note that the city's match is also linked to our bond project for the Water Resource Recovery Facility. So minus this grant, the city would be paying for the full cost of these upgrades. But obviously, it would be nice if we are awarded this grant, and that would knock $2 million off of the total bond.
Okay. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here to speak in reference to this public hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address. Then you'll have five minutes to speak. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use your raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You will need to state your name and address first, and then you'll have five minutes to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this public com, this public hearing? Is there anyone in Zoom?
No hands raised.
All right. If there are no public comments, I will close the public hearing. Commission, do you have any questions you would like answered at this time? You guys are a real quiet bunch tonight. All right, if we have no questions, is there a motion?
I move to accept the, the grant as written to, I don't know, how am I supposed to phrase it?
I move to adopt the attached resolution for inclusion in the 2022 CB, CDBG grant application. Is that what it is?
Perfect. Second.
All right. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Oh, you need to roll call vote. I have it written right here, too. Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now, we're going to move on to item 18 on the agenda. This is a public hearing on the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Vitalization and Placemaking Grant Proposal. Manager dissents, please give the commission an overview.
Staff is applying for state funding for the reconstruction of the Town Center Civic Space through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation Revitalization and Placemaking Grant Program. The total request is for $1 million in state funds to be matched by $500,000 in funds from the city. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the city commission is asked to approve the attached memo to authorize the grant application and commit the local matching funds.
All right, the floor is now open for the public hearing. If you are here for this public hearing, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining by Zoom, please raise, use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You will need to state your name and address, and then you'll be given five minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing? Is there anyone in Zoom?
No hands are raised.
Okay, at this time, if no one wishes to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commission, do you have any questions you would like answered? Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the resolution for the revitalization and placemaking grant as presented and hold the public hearing on May 9th, 2022 on the same.
It is May 9th. What? It is?
We're holding a public hearing right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move that we approve the, the grant application and resolution on the same.
All right. I think we're all.
I'll second that.
We all just want to be outside at this point. All right, is there a discussion on this motion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now, we're to item 19 of the agenda. This is a public hearing on an ordinance to amend Chapter 110 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances to allow for the operation of petty cabs. Manager dissents, please give the commission an overview.
So, following city commission direction in 2021, staff worked with the city attorney to develop the attached ordinance to allow for and regulate the operations of petty cabs within the city. The ordinance sets minimum requirements for operation, including the issuance of a license, safety requirements, and regulation of operations. These regulations include operation only on city streets and no operation on MDOT, county, or CMU-controlled streets unless crossing those streets at a traffic signal. Lastly, hours of operation will not allow petty cabs to operate between 12:00 AM and 8:00 AM. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, the city commission can approve the proposed ordinance.
All right, the floor is open for the public hearing. If you're here to speak on this public hearing, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use your raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. You will state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes.
Well, this is 1403 North Drive, Mount Pleasant. I'm just here to support it. I think it's a great idea for the city. Followed it for quite a few years now with different leadership that we've had coming, going here. This is the furthest we've gotten, so thank you for that. I've been to different college towns, tourist towns, and they are, seem to be very popular and a good source of income for not just the petty cab itself, but the surrounding businesses, too. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in Zoom?
No hands are raised.
All right. Anyone else wishes to speak at this time? All right, I will close the public hearing. Commission, do you have any questions you'd like answered at this time? Commissioner Asman?
Uh, might be obvious, but is it just so?
Can you come closer?
Oh, sorry. Is it solely for transportation?
In this case, no. We would be talking about also allowing the sort of pedal trolleys where you see individuals having beer and pedaling around the town as well, too.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Bush?
Do we have any current businesses interested in applying for a petty cab? Is this pushed by any interested parties or just opening up the possibility?
It opens up the possibility, but we did have one business interested that reached out to us back actually before my time.
Okay.
Commissioner Eke?
Commissioner Eke is interested in how we make sure that we do not suffer from the littering of streets of the community. I drove down High Street today, and on the right side of the side, south side of east of High Street, there's a whole row of plastic bags floating all over the place. And I hope that, you know, with this, we'll also make sure that we maintain our requirement for clean neighborhoods.
If I can address the concern, so this ordinance actually makes littering off of the petty cab the responsibility of the petty cab owner. So it would be their responsibility to ensure that no littering takes place.
Good. So there'll be fines imposed if we find littering associated with them?
Yes, that is correct.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the, is it a resolution or proposal?
The amendment, yeah?
The amendment.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Asman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, I'm thinking that the next two public hearing hearings are what most of you are here for. Our item 20 on the agenda is a public hearing on the ordinance to amend Chapter 112 of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances. Manager dissents, please give the commission an overview.
Staff has prepared the attached ordinance which amends the city's medical marijuana ordinance. The ordinance removes the current caps in place for marijuana businesses and instead allows for an unlimited number of businesses to operate within the city's boundaries. Potential businesses are still held to the city's standards in obtaining a license by filling out the local application as well as the state application and going through that process. The city also has existing buffer zones in place that would remain in place and provide separation between marijuana businesses, K through 12 schools, and Central Michigan University. Following the public hearing, the city commission can move to approve the proposed ordinances as written.
Okay. Before I open this public hearing, this, what we did last time because we had a large crowd. All, if you are in favor of lifting the caps for the marijuana, I would like you to stand or raise your hand so you can be counted, so that we can see who's here. And on Zoom, if you could use your raised hand feature or star nine, and you're, you could be counted there. Clerk Baugh, how many do we have?
I show 11 in the audience.
Okay.
There are two on Zoom.
Two? Okay, we have 13. For the caps to be lifted, you may have a seat. If you are opposed to the caps being lifted, you can stand at this time and be counted. Same on Zoom, use your raised hand feature or star nine. Okay, and how many do we have?
I saw 11 in the audience.
11?
I show one on Zoom, but I think you forgot to lower his hand, so.
Okay. All right, you may be seated. Okay. We have heard many arguments for and against for the past quite a few months on what to do with the marijuana ordinances. If you have something that you feel is new information that you would like to present to the city commission at this time, please come forward. If you do, if you want to speak to the commission, you can as well. But I'm just, you know, trying to make sure that we all get out before the sunshine goes away tonight. But I think that it's very important for everyone's voice to be heard. So if you'd like to come forward and make a statement in support or in opposition, please come to the podium, state your name and address before you speak, and you will have five minutes. If you're joining by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Phone, you will have to state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. The floor is now open for public hearing.
Mayor, can I make a comment? This is for changing the cap on medical.
I believe so, yes, the medical.
Yes.
Just to clarify for everyone, this is for medical businesses.
The next public hearing is for the adult use. Is there anyone on Zoom that would wish to speak at this time?
No hands are raised.
All right. Yeah, I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Commission, do you have any questions you would like to have answered?
I just have a comment that
Yes.
I think it's kind of a moot point since that's the aspect of the businesses that's, that are failing.
Are there any questions? All right, do we have a motion on the floor?
I move that we accept the changes to the ordinance as written.
I second.
All right. Is there discussion at this time? I don't see any hands raised. Clerk Baugh, please take the roll call vote. Commissioner Asman?
No.
Commissioner Eke?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perschbacher?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 21. This is also a public hearing on the ordinance to amend Chapter 115, which is the adult-use recreational marijuana of the Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances. Manager dissents, please give the commission an overview.
Staff has prepared the attached ordinances which amend the city's adult-use marijuana ordinance. The ordinance removes the current caps in place for marijuana businesses and instead allows for an unlimited number of businesses to operate within the city's boundaries. Potential businesses are still held to the city's standard for obtaining a license and requires the local application as well as the state application and review process. The city also has existing buffer zones that will provide separation between marijuana businesses, K through 12 schools, and Central Michigan University. Following the public hearing, the city commission can move to approve the proposed ordinances as written.
All right. If you wish to speak on this, at this public hearing, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. If you have joined us by Zoom, use your raised hand feature or star nine if you've joined Zoom by phone. You'll be, need to state your name and address, and you'll be given five minutes. The floor is now open for the public hearing.
Hi, everybody. My name is Phil Glasskey at 414 North University. I was born in Ann Arbor a long time ago, 32 years ago. Family moved to Colorado, and since then, I went to high school, made a lot of friends, and, and made a career out of working with cannabis. I actually am a cannabis manager here in town. The first thing I notice when I get to any town I ever go to is how many liquor stores are there? There, there sure are a lot of places you can buy practically poison that is available to anybody, even if you're 21 and older. It doesn't matter, people are still going to get whatever they want. I grew up in an era where cannabis was illegal, and it didn't matter if it was legal or not, people are still going to get it. That what's important is to have safe regulations for, for, for it doesn't matter what. If it's alcohol, let's have safe regulations for it. If it's cannabis, let's have safe regulations for it. Children are definitely our future, and they're important to us. But to think that they're in somehow way affected in a negative fashion from cannabis being legalized, I did not see any of that in Colorado. If anything, I saw communities thriving. People want to go to communities where cannabis dispensaries are allowed. Imagine for yourself if you went to a town and there was no liquor stores. Granted, probably people would be happy about that, but a lot of people probably wouldn't move there. A lot of people probably wouldn't even stay there, and probably people wouldn't bring their businesses there. Cannabis has only been a positive reinforcing attribute that is through the allowing of medical and recreational dispensaries only makes towns seem to thrive more and their populations seem to be happy more. I would really consider you guys to raise the cap. I like the idea of keeping dispensaries separate from each other. I, I obviously, I wouldn't want to see every, your drive down Obviously, I wouldn't want to see every, you drive down the road and there's just endless dispensaries. I don't think anybody wants that. I think most people would prefer to have dispensaries not close to schools, not close to residential areas, but I think we can definitely allow more than three recreational dispensaries, and they would not affect this community in any negative way, in my opinion. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Richardson. Oh, the people already voted on this, and we said no. So now you're going to take the people's vote away? I don't think that's the American way. We said three, that's what we want. Now you're just going to bypass the Constitution and take our vote away? We have enough, we are seeing these stores everywhere. You go down, they're everywhere. We don't need them, three's enough. If they need more than that, then they've got a problem. And it is affecting this town, because that's what you see. Bring in the other businesses that we would like, like the factory that could have employed over 200, or the restaurants that we would enjoy, all of us, not all of us need to smoke pot, and it is affecting us, because you drive down the road and you see these pot smokers in their car, which is illegal, so it is affecting all of us. Follow the Constitution.
Hi, Stephen Timmerman, 112 North Lansing Street. I'm from Rio's Happy Tree. I'm Rio's dad, actually. We are a micro business, as some of you may know, licensed in the city. We are, by definition, a very small family-owned business, something I think the citizens of Mount Pleasant are advocating for. In addition to Rio's Happy Tree, there's another micro business poised to open within the next 12 months. This will give an additional two sources of adult-use cannabis in the city, bringing it a total of five. At five, in a city this size, you're starting to limit it out. There's been some discussion that this rule will help the small business, but the reality is it will unlock the corporate money, long money, money that will be used to squeeze the small business, cutthroat pricing, really loss-leading, somebody that can absorb that for a year or more for a small business. The micro business cannot do that. So I think the rule as it's written is negative. There was a licensing process already done. Fair or not, it was done. We haven't seen that full cannabis footprint developed yet. The two micro businesses are unopened, so to assume that more licenses are needed, it's forward-thinking, we are not there yet. We ask that the commission stave this off, wait for the full cannabis footprint to be realized in the city, wait until Midland ends their prohibition and see what effect that has on the Mount Pleasant consumer. It will drastically reduce the amount of consumers we currently have here. Then the businesses will become even more cutthroat. And sure, that we're just asking the commission to be patient, let that footprint be realized, take the time to study other unintended consequences that may arise over the next 12 months as the footprint becomes realized, and make one sweeping rules change. Additional licenses may be needed, but I don't think we can acknowledge that until we see the actual market without prohibition in other cities. Those customers are being driven here. They won't be driven here for very long. A small business that makes a tenth of what a huge corporation does, not to name anyone, can't survive a year of losing money constantly. We can't continue to move the goalposts on these businesses that, excuse my language, have went through hell to achieve licensing and compliance already, and now we're going to just change the law again. We ask the commission not to do that, and we're open to any questions after the meeting from anyone. Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak?
I'm going to move in Toby Bush.
Hi, I'm Toby Bush. I reside at 422 South Washington Street, and I am talking in support of removing or at least raising the caps, as I believe it will allow a business to flourish, particularly a small business, and as well as, so yeah, it'll help, it'll help business flourish, it'll help the small businesses regardless of earlier, what the man before said to me is businesses will already, will take over and become more cutthroat. That is already happening, as the current businesses that are in town that do own recreational cannabis licenses are these bigger businesses, these corporate positions that have already had the resources to take the licenses that are only the cap, I believe, of three right now. So removing or raising those caps will allow more businesses to throw their hand into the ring, and that would hopefully, most likely, if it's done by a small business and somebody by locally, it will keep the money local rather than continue just having our spot be a place for big corporations to get more money out of us. Yes, that's my point.
Thank you.
Good move in Caleb Carey.
Okay. Hang on, Joe.
Hello, my name is James Marino. I live at 316 South Arnold, and I'm encouraging the commission to lift the cap today for a few different reasons. One, so there can be more jobs. Two, so there can be more tax revenue, and I've seen this tax revenue being used for all kinds of stuff, to fund substance abuse things, to whatever the local government wants to do with the revenue. And the other part is jobs. If you take the cap off, there'll be more jobs, and there'll be, also, with more facilities, there'll be more buying of other things, not just the cannabis. And the last reason I think that the commission should do this is because there was a effort by people in the city, citizens of Mount Pleasant, and they got signatures, and they were going to vote on this to increase the number of recreational or adult cannabis in the city. And because of big money and lobbying and legal efforts, which I never saw before, it was stopped before it even was printed. It was stopped before it was even put for the people to vote. So another advantage and reason to do this is to signal to the people that mounted that initiative that the city commission is listening to what the people want. So thank you.
Thank you. Is Caleb available?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, Caleb Carey, 910 East Chippewa Street. I'm owner of Consano, it's a med provisioning downtown. I just wanted to clarify to some of the people that are against this initiative that this truly was not voted on. As the gentleman previously mentioned, there was the petition, and it was undermined by a group called Three is Enough, and it was undermined at the appellate level in the court, the circuit court ruled in the city's favor. And part of the reason that this is happening is so that a small family business, just like the micro business gentleman, is just trying to survive. The commission was willing to just do a reciprocity to limit the cap, but Three is Enough is too much of a threatening force, and this is the only way they view that this can be done without being sued by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Hey, good evening. My name is Matthew Roman. I'm the director of government relations for Stash Ventures. We're located at 210 West Prekert Street. We're currently cultivating, and we should be processing very soon. Stash Ventures would love the opportunity to invest more in this community. We've already made a significant investment. We'd like to bring more jobs as well as bring our product directly to the consumer in this community. I'm here to ask you today to raise the caps. We're also about healthy competition. Understand that we're going toward a limited model with buffer zones, which effectively caps it, but I would like the commission to consider some type of capping in regards to that, but definitely excited to, at the prospect of potentially bringing a new store here, and just want to say thank you to everybody from Mount Pleasant for being so supportive of our project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No more raised hands.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Dennis Egan at 1603 East Bellows. I'm going to set this for 4 minutes 20 seconds. I want to honor the time, and then I have about 30, 40 seconds, you know, to close. I want to honor that. I respect all of you. It's a privilege to be here. I come in humility. I repudiate the strife and contempt in our public discourse. We've lost civility in our nation in the discipline of public discourse and argumentation. We must not have malice toward those we disagree with, and I don't want to be self-righteous. I don't want to be self-righteous. I have my weaknesses, and I want to have compassion toward other human beings. The paradox of freedom and responsibility is very interesting. Now, I will honor the city in terms of whatever they decide, but conscience, integrity, and moral principles come before financial gain. Humans are vulnerable. Our best efforts come short and need grace in light of human suffering. We need restraint and sobriety. We said the pledge of allegiance and to the republic for which it stands. A society that does not have personal restraint cannot stand. Now, I could have killed others and myself in the 1980s and 90s as a high school kid, early adult years. I was into drugs, marijuana was my favorite. I have a point of reference to be speaking. Now, the experience of mind-altering substances does not occur in a vacuum or isolation from other interpersonal events in society. Now, here's the question. What have we become in Mount Pleasant? Now, fair-minded people should acknowledge that we have some problems. Now, let's humble ourselves and consider some facts, not static but dynamic. In other words, this is not an easy issue, and I respect everyone here, as I already said. Now, we do need restraint on our passions. Virtue, responsibility, and self-discipline are important, but what's the big picture here? Now, who saw the bus for months and months and months in Mount Pleasant High School saying, "We're trying to hire," and nobody seemed to take the jobs? Now, there's reasons, I know, but we talk about a work ethic. Now, the irony of the gentleman who spoke a couple moments ago, he was talking about creating jobs, but why wouldn't people fulfill that? Why did the bus have to be out there month after month after month? You know, we've lost our work ethic. And I'm just talking about human, our, just our human condition. I mean, you look at $8 billion roughly in fraudulent COVID claims in the state of Michigan. I mean, I'm just trying to present the character of human nature here. Now, we cannot separate human nature from altered states of mind. Do stoned citizens improve the virtue in our city? Now, Mount Pleasant Middle School had a case where a kid brought pot to school. He got it from his parents, okay. In 2010, there was a terrible accident when we lost a student in a car accident. Now, I won't spin the facts, it breaks my heart to mention this. I wish peace on both of those families from 2010, but we can't put our heads in the sand. The Morning Sun said there is no test to determine how much THC was in the driver's system at the time of the crash, and it did say high speed was the issue, but you can't dismiss that marijuana played a small role, at least in that. Now, here's the thing. Dr. Bonar said, I don't know if I'm pronouncing her name right, from the University of Michigan in Ann Arbor, the safest strategy is to not drive at all on the day you use marijuana. But here's the thing, there's more mind-altering substances, the more we have of them, the more potential for trouble. Now, in 2021 and this year, the Department of, the Isabella Sheriff's Department and other law enforcement professionals, they've dealt with two cases of narcotics. Now, we know marijuana is much safer than narcotics, but here's the point, the National Library of Medicine said that we're still trying to figure out the unintentional ingestion of marijuana products by children, the relationship between marijuana and opioid use. In other words, they're looking at the big picture, the dynamics of all of this. I mean, if we have people using narcotics, I'm not saying it's a lot of people, and I'm not saying people who use marijuana will use narcotics. What I am saying is what if a narcotic person in this county sells to a 13-year-old where he gets legal pot, that 13-year-old gets it, pays a little extra, and then that person fulfills their need for cocaine from the profit they make? I'm just saying, just think outside the box. Now, I know I'm running out of time soon, but here's the thing. Look, the medical marijuana is a good thing, you'd have to be a fool to deny that. Okay, 40 seconds left. I really am wanting to honor this, so, so be it. I support medical marijuana in this town. I think CMU should help the people who have these small businesses who are suffering and start a multimillion-dollar effort to research and let them be a part of it, but it should be for medical use. So bottom line, I'm out of time here in about 20 seconds. I had much more to say, I thought I could fit it in 300 seconds, but I can't. But I am going to send some research from Stanford University, U of M in Ann Arbor, and I'm going to talk to people at Isabella County DHHS, different people in our community and our state, and I'm going to be producing a resource for this commission over the next month or two or three months. And I just hope you'll at least take it to heart. But whatever happens, I will respect the decision. But I was a drug addict as a teenager and a young adult, marijuana was my favorite thing, and look, I don't want to spin this, you know, it's, we need it for medical use. I just don't think it's good for virtue to smoke it. I smoked a lot of it, and I'm not proud of it, but I don't condemn anybody. I love you. As a Christian, I'm humbled, and I just hope we can help people do what's right to be a better nation, because we need a lot of grace, a lot of love. So I hope you will respect me and not just fellowship me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom?
No raised hands.
Anyone else in the audience? All right, this time I'm going to close the public. Oh, we have someone else. Okay.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I would like to make a couple comments.
Can we get your name and address, please?
Oh, Deb Carey. I own Consano's with my son Caleb. I'd like to know what happened to reciprocity, basically. 70 people were for reciprocity when you had your, when you had your public input. Four people were against it, but you got scared off with the threat of a lawsuit, the same Three is Enough that undermined our own ballot. And you guys, you didn't even have any anger? You did nothing about it? Where was the outrage? Where was the outrage when they came in and took away that of the ballot? And by the way, it was capped at 10, because that's how many people were on the waiting list for it. That's why we capped it at 10. So you had your chance for reciprocity, and that would cap it, because it was a housekeeping task to make it, so a contest shouldn't be needed, but somebody's going to challenge it, because it's new, because it's new. But we should see who's challenging it and not support these businesses and let other cities see who's coming in and trying to ramrod the city policies and the commissioners. You don't feel it, but somebody's got their hands up, you guys. And it's been that way for a year and a half. This is a conversation from December of 2020, when it was shut down. And I'll tell you, a month ago, if you guys would have said you're going to unre- unrelease the caps, you wouldn't have even thought about it. It wasn't until somebody comes in and threatens you with a lawsuit. You're probably going to get a lawsuit out of this, some way or another, because they don't want change. And for you people who are worried that the kids are going to become drug addicts, the pie has been made. It doesn't matter how many slices you make, the pie has been made, and it doesn't matter if you have 50 or three. Anybody who wants to buy, purchase it, and purchase it safely, by the way, at least it's safe. It's not off of some internet and you're getting a bunch of poison. But I have been just, I'm broken. I'm broken. You guys broke me. I don't care what you do, because I'm closed. I hope you do something just to protect my investment. I'm a cancer survivor, and I worked 30 years in the health, I put, I gave people opiates and benzos, and I, this was my way of making restitution. I was going to retire, and I'm into energy healing and that kind of stuff. This was just an alternative. But you guys, you stole my dream, and you backed a big... But you guys, you stole my dream and you backed a big company who could give the rat's ass about anybody but their profits, as demonstrated by having two, two city lawyers from Lansing come in and undermine our election with no outrage from any of you. That just made me sick. So, you know, I, I, I give up. And it's not that I'm, I'm giving up. It's I decided to remove myself from this toxic environment that has kept me sleepless, that has jaded me, has jaded me. And I'm not like that. I just need to step away and get back into my own little harmony, harmony of life and not get into this manipulation that you guys, that you guys are all being manipulated. Like I said, you don't feel it, but you know it, Amy.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Anyone else on Zoom?
No hands are raised.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions you would like answered? Commissioner Ake.
Commissioner Ake wants to make sure that we understand that in looking at lifting the cap on adult-use marijuana, we are guided by the state guidelines. And the state guidelines do state that we can, the municipality, can lift the cap. State guidelines also provide instructions on proximity of businesses from one another. State guidelines also provide buffer zones. The municipality also has the right to expand or limit the buffer zones, as I understand from the state guidelines. I also want to make sure that we are guided by already established criteria for municipal, municipality criteria for granting licenses. And the city administrator's delineation of areas that are protected by the offer, the administrator included the public school, CMU residential areas. What about churches? I didn't hear you say churches.
Yep.
Or places of worship?
Yep, that is correct. Offhand, I do not know. I would have to call upon assistance from the Assistant Community Services Director and City Planner, Jacob Kane.
I think state guidelines may have included churches or places of worship. Please confirm or check.
Hey, first backer members of the commission. The state allows communities to establish zoning rules for adult-use marijuana establishments, but it doesn't dictate the manner in which we do that. And so we could opt not to zone them or to zone them in any manner that we wish. Currently, they are zoned to prevent their location within 1,000 feet of K through 12 schools and within 300 foot of Central Michigan University, except when it's on the east side of South Mission Street. And so those are the two buffers that do exist on our ordinance, but those are the only two, um, specific location criteria beyond being in the CD four or five zoning districts and also being located in either the CBD TIFA, which is the Downtown Tax Incrimen District, or the Downtown Development Authority, which applies on Mission and Pickard.
Just of note, Mayor, I did notice that the city attorney does have her hand raised on Zoom, so she may want to address this question as well.
Okay.
Great, thank you. This is Laura Genovich from Foster Swift. I, I agree with the city staff's comment. The city is authorized to establish those buffers, which it has already done in its zoning, and this would not change that. And the state law concerning adult-use marijuana establishments does not require any buffer from churches.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Asman?
Go ahead. Commissioner Ronan, you can go first.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I was, um, have we built in some review process?
Uh, for clarification.
A three-year review or is this? I mean, oftentimes with something like this, we probably want to have the commission have to look at it in X number of years or, I don't know.
I haven't suggested anything, but certainly if the city commission wanted to, we could build that review process in.
That would be a friendly amendment, I assume, something that could just, I mean, I don't.
Could be, uh, it could also be included in the original motion as well, too.
Yeah. Commissioner Asman?
My question, I guess, is for you, Manager Dissents. So, in essence, I wasn't here for the original part of it. There was a review process, so, you know, I've been educated over my small amount of time here. This, in essence, would take you completely out of it in criteria for, you know, for example, uh, the establishment on, uh, Consono, they invested in a building and added some value to the community. The other two have invested in buildings and added to the community. But it sounds like going forward with, if this ordinance is approved, that is completely off the table, right?
Uh, that's correct. Aside from any sort of state or local zoning guidelines, um, for instance, and I think I understand what you, uh, are referring to here, some of the points criteria for investment into the community, those sort of things, that would go away underneath this proposed ordinance, only because it would offer license to anyone who applies. So there wouldn't be any sort of, uh, points given to development or, or how much, uh, company puts into a building or anything like that, no.
Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry, this is Laura Genovich from Foster Swift. I apologize, there's not a better way to, um, get attention through Zoom, but, um, I wanted to go back to the comment about a friendly amendment for review process. I would strongly encourage that any amendment be done, um, in writing and then, um, if not tonight, then at a next meeting adopted, for the reason that if the review process would say, for example, that a license is going to be revoked or anything like that, there need to be due process provisions in there, such as a notice and a hearing for that licensee, um, because once they have a license, um, there is a process that would be required to change that license status.
Yes, Manager Dissents.
Just, uh, Laura, just a question back to you. If I understand the commissioner's, um, point, though, it would be a review process for the city commission to come back and review the effects of this ordinance, and that would be a direction to staff. If that is the case, could that just be placed into a motion?
I apologize, I misunderstood. Yes, I believe the current version provides for eliminating the existing language about the policy review, which was, um, section 115.08. So you could simply change that to require a policy review in a different year. The only thing I would note, though, is if you do have licenses that are issued between now and then, um, it, it's not so easy to reduce the number of licenses later, once those are awarded.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I, just have.
Commissioner Asman?
One follow-up question. So, we could expand the buffer zone if so chose?
That is a possibility. It would have to be done under another ordinance, because as that would be brought forward, it would require a public hearing and be an amendment to the zoning ordinance, but that is something that the city commission could move forward with as well.
So it cannot be added to this ordinance? It has to be its own separate?
Uh, for this evening, what you would have to do, if you were to, uh, modify that within the zoning ordinance, that would have to come up as a separate zoning ordinance amendment.
I'm not quite sure how to do that.
If the city commission wanted to, uh, you could, as discussion of part of this, direct the city staff to bring forward a zoning ordinance amendment and provide some feedback or some guidance to staff as to what those buffers might be, what the city commission might have in mind if they wanted to move forward with amendment.
If you did want to do that, I apologize, Laura Genovich, again, um, interjecting. Keep in mind that if this ordinance takes effect before you have other zoning ordinance amendments in effect, then the current zoning would apply to people who apply under what you are adopting tonight. That did not perhaps come out very clearly, but if your intention is for these new businesses to be subject to different zoning, then you should either not adopt this now or, um, change the effective date to give the city time to consider and go through the process for a zoning ordinance amendment, which needs to go through the planning commission.
Commissioner Ake?
Could the expansion of the buffer zone be included in the current amendment as a friendly amendment?
No.
No.
Commissioner Asman?
Um, I would kind of like to follow what Laura and Manager Dissents had said. There's a lot of i's that need dotted and t's that need crossed with this, and, um, just to, to give it a blanket, approval is, I don't think, right.
Are there any further questions? Okay, do we have a motion? Commissioner Osager?
I move that we approve an ordinance change to amend chapter 115 with the addition of adding in a review process after a year.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
If I may, are you then proposing to clarify that motion to change the language in 115.08? I think it's 08, or to retain that? I think it's important that it be clear what the commission is adopting, since we're changing the ordinance language through the motion.
115.08 is a good place to put that in.
And so that language, I'm getting back to it. Um, so instead of removing that section as proposed, you would keep the existing 115.08, but change policy review in 2020 to say policy review in 2023 and have it say honor before December 31st, 2023. City staff shall submit a report to the city commission regarding the administration of this ordinance and the provisions of the zoning ordinance pertaining to adult-use marijuana and regarding any other pertinent information relating to the operation of adult-use marijuana establishments in the city. The report may include proposed ordinance amendments or other proposed policy changes, period.
I would agree with that wording.
Thank you. So we're just unstriking 115.08?
And change.
And changing it to 2023. All right, we have a motion, and that has been clarified, and a second. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Asman?
I was just curious, fellow commissioners, have any interest in, you know, I think we're missing a few things. Churches, childcare, some of those other things in the buffer zone. Does anybody agree here?
What was the question again, or your comment, Commissioner Asman?
Just to expand the buffer zone, I guess, if you will. There's things missing to it if, um...
Commissioner Asman? I, I think the reason I don't agree with that is because of the zoning, that the establishments have to be in a business-zoned district.
And childcare, and that is not ever in those areas?
I'm not sure.
I'm just curious.
Honestly, for an answer, I'd have to call up, uh, City Planner Jacob Kane again, who would know more about the particular businesses in each zoning district.
Thanks, Jacob.
Should really just get a microphone over there.
You should just stay there.
No. Uh, so to answer your question, Commissioner Asman, um, we do allow childcare centers in group, um, childcare homes in the CD four district and childcare centers in the CD five district, which, um, are the two places where the marijuana retailers are also permitted. Um, they, they are further restricted by the buffers and by those two tax capture districts. And off the top of my head, I'm only, um, I should say, I'm not aware of any childcare centers that are located in the tax capture districts. We do have a new childcare center in the CD four, but it's outside of the, um, tax captures. Um, the majority of the daycare centers in the city are either located in our civic zones, um, affiliated with primarily places of worship, or our public schools, or our private schools, um, or are located, um, in private homes in residential districts, so primarily in the CD three and CD three L districts. But that's not to say that we couldn't have those uses created in the future. You'll actually be receiving, um, likely in the next couple of months, a referral from the planning commission to set up a public hearing on a text change that would expand the allowance for childcare center locations, um, in hopes of addressing some, um, undersupply of childcare in the region. But that's, that's to come.
They have to believe that if there was a childcare center in one of those areas, it would probably hesitate to move in next to a marijuana facility. And we have, the Embers used to be, I'm sure that's in the business district, and now it's a church, so I would imagine that there would be, this time, nothing to stop them from moving in right next to, to that area.
Commissioner Ake?
Commissioner, um, Commissioner Asman has, um, addressed a little bit of what I needed clarity for. I'm going to assume that we could, in the future, include churches and childcare in the areas that, um, we consider when we think about buffer zones between them and, you know, marijuana, um, licensed operations. It, this is work that we have to do with a city planning commission. Uh, it's, it's clear that we're going to have to work closely with that.
Isn't that just?
Correct.
Okay. But if we do vote on this right now, the current guidelines will inform whatever licenses are approved within this particular period. Am I, is that, am I correct in the interpretation?
Uh, my apologies, I don't, um, understand the question.
What I'm saying that if we approve this, the language of this ordinance right now, and we do receive applications for licenses, it is this language that then informs who receives licenses from us until we amend or create a new ordinance that would include these other areas that we're talking about.
Yeah, if I understand the question correctly, uh, if this ordinance is approved tonight, then moving forward, until the zoning ordinance would be amended to include churches, childcare, et cetera.
Yes, that's my question.
Then the current buffer zones would be the regulation that any application, applicant would follow.
Okay.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, I, I don't have a horse in this race, so to speak, but, um, these are not use facilities, right? These, these are just people going in and purchasing something, right? It's, uh, these are not like bars or, um, places where people are going to actually utilize the substance, right? They're just going in and, we have none of those in the city. These people are just going in and purchasing something like Rick's Food Store. just going in and purchasing something like Rick's Food Store, or something like that.
That is correct, and not just that, but they're actually barred from use on the premises as well, too.
Right.
I think a lot of the concerns that have been raised are based off of appearances and how things look. And I think that one of our issues is appearances of empty buildings, and more good paying jobs, and more tax revenue. And here's a solution that could address a lot of those issues. It just may not be wrapped up in the package that everybody wants. But I do think giving an opportunity to, 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 to open it up and let the market decide is going to be really good for our community.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Acker.
May I just add to what Commissioner Bush has said? The city, we hear residents say they want amenities in the city, and the city says it wants to fix certain things. We don't have the fiscal resources to do all the fixing that we need to do for the city. I understand that it's almost immoral to talk about using this money to fix things in the city. But the reality that faces us is that we really don't have big industries here to provide us with the fiscal resources. Other cities, you know, I have been reading up on Colorado and other cities, and there's nothing in there that indicates to me that there has been an explosion of criminal activity related to marijuana usage. I have no vested interest. I don't own a business. I don't smoke, not even, you know, smoking smoke for that matter. So I, you know, it doesn't matter to me whether or not the businesses are next door or outside my area. But the point is that the city needs to capture some revenues for whatever it needs to do. Whether we license, we take, we lift the cap or not, there will be businesses located either around us or in the next city. So the reality, however, is that we have to balance what is good for this city, and also what is good for businesses and businesses bring revenue to the city. And, you know, it simply seems to me as, you know, that this is good sense, in a way, regardless of what decision we make today, somebody is going to be very vexed. And so the decision we have to make, for me, has to be one that balances the need of the city, and, you know, the resources we have to keep the city moving forward, and also to create the jobs that hopefully we save our people. So I think we want to think about this, and, you know, it's not personal, you know? I think we have to think about what is good for our city, and how to keep it alive, and how to do the things that we need to do.
I have one last comment. I just would like to remind my fellow commissioners that if we have revenues that are being used for legal fees, we are not able to use that money for resources and other things in the community. It just doesn't make sense. It's fiscally irresponsible.
But the state does say we can lift the cap. And so we are, if we're guided by state guidelines, then it would seem to me that anybody who is suing us will have to go through the state, really, for using, applying state guidelines. The problem is when people believe that we did not follow state guidelines, or did not follow, you know, established guidelines for making certain decisions. Either way, somebody is going to be upset. It's a commandment.
Can the city attorney speak to that?
Is the city, well, ask.
Hey, she's still here.
Laura, could you attest to that? Now, does every lawsuit go through the state and not through the municipality of the city?
Thank you. Sorry, I had to get unmuted there. So I want to make sure I understand what the question is. Is the question what the impact of this will be on existing litigation? Or?
Future.
For future.
What are the possibilities of future litigation if we follow this guideline?
Right. Well, I don't have a crystal ball, and the reality is that anyone can sue the city really for anything. The question is whether it has merit. It's, there's no question in my mind that the city has the legal right to amend its ordinance if it chooses as a policy matter to do so, to lift the cap, because MRTMA, the state law, gives the city the authority to decide whether it wants to allow adult use establishments, and if so, the number of those establishments. So from that perspective, I believe the ordinance that the city has before it is perfectly lawful. Whether you want to do that is a policy question.
Yeah, Laura, as long as you're using crystal balls tonight, can you predict what would happen to existing lawsuits, or is that just inevitable?
Well, I don't have any real insight in terms of what those plaintiffs would intend to do. I question whether it would be meaningful for them to proceed and continue, for them to continue to spend money, given that they would have the opportunity to obtain a license in the city, which I believe was their end goal. That said, none of them have indicated that they intend to dismiss their lawsuits yet. So unless and until that happens, we continue to defend that litigation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Manager dissents.
Mayor, if I could, just so that way, staff is on the same page here. Laura, this question is for you. With regard to the motion that was made and the amendment for the one year process, I just want to make sure that you're okay, and then that staff understands that that can be applied here tonight, and we can still move forward with adoption, if that's the way the city commission wants to move forward with this.
Yes, I view that as an administrative part of this ordinance, and certainly not the main thrust, and not the main reason. You have people here to comment. I believe that you are okay to proceed with that amendment, as I stated it, which is just to retain that review provision and change the language, or change the year to 2023.
All right, excellent. Thank you very much, Laura.
Any further discussion? Then we'll go to a roll call, though. Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Ronan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hasman?
No.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Commissioner Ecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simon?
Yes.
Mayor Perchbacker?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, now we're going to, we are done with public hearing, our five public hearings. We're going to move on to new business. We have reached section, or item 22, to consider the Broadway Central staff recommendation. Manager dissents, please give the commission an overview.
Thank you, mayor. In your city commission package, you'll find a memo from staff which proposes a new way of approaching Broadway Central for the 2022 season. Staff considered a great amount of input from the community and from various stakeholders. Supporters of Broadway Central want a space to experience the downtown and to utilize as outdoor dining and meeting space. Opponents of Broadway Central express the desire to not have the street closed unless a special event was taking place, and for us to minimize impacts on parking in the downtown. Staff now proposes to keep Broadway open while setting up outdoor dining and meeting space in some of the parking areas and on the sidewalk. The outdoor space will allow visitors to meet and dine at local restaurants. The street will remain open to traffic. The proposal maintains most parking, maintains most of the parking by only utilizing six spaces beyond what is currently occupied downtown. A map of the proposed social area is included in your city commission packet. Broadway Central would be closed only for special events, and this would include Craft Beer Festival, HBA Car Show, For Art's Sake Art Show, and possible events with the Chamber of Commerce. The revised Broadway Central plan will also provide seating area for a potential social district in the downtown. If approved, staff could move forward with the requirements to make the social district happen. A recommendation to approve the Broadway Central plan and budget for 2022 is being considered at this time.
All right, commission, do you have any questions for clarification?
It's my understanding that we are just going to simply, we are going to limit the, the coverage, the area of the closure.
Correct.
And it will be, it will be based on events.
Correct. So the down, the street itself would remain open just about every other day, other than when events are going on. Otherwise, the only space being taken up for the kind of social aspect of Broadway Central would be in about half a dozen parking spaces, and on the sidewalk as well.
Okay. I've got it for Laura. Question or comment? Is there any plan to address the occupation? Okay, backup. One of the comments we heard over and over has to do with the loss of parking spaces. But I have come to find out that some of those parking spaces that are occupied are actually occupied by some business owners. So they are, you know, we've got to hold them accountable for taking up the spaces that they claim their clients need, right? So do we have any plan to make sure, at least to figure out how to make sure that the business owners do not take up the parking spaces which their clients need, and for which they have refused to allow this process to go forward? What's the city's plan, that's all? I'm being facetious, yeah, but I'm serious.
Staff has had some internal conversation on this.
Okay.
What I think we want to do, though, is to bring this to the city commission in a future work session to discuss just parking overall in the downtown. We've received, through this process, quite a bit of feedback from business owners about parking in general. So this kind of opened up a bit more conversation than just the Broadway Central concept. So I would say more to come on this, and hopefully in the very new Fierchi here.
Good. We need to have a conversation with them. They can't blame us for taking parking spaces when they are actually sitting in those parking spaces that their own clients need. That's all.
Commissioner Bush.
I want to add something to that, and this may be just anecdotal, but I feel like maybe ever since COVID, perhaps downtown parking limits have not been being enforced as regularly. I don't know if that was a
That's not because of COVID. That was because of a lawsuit that was taken to the Michigan Supreme Court, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Saying that we could not chalk the tires to show. So there was, there was a limited way for us to
Enforce.
Enforce.
Okay.
But we're
So that's a work session item.
That's we're working on that.
Okay. But I think that's definitely relevant to this discussion, since that was one of the main objections. Now, when it comes to the, this map that we're looking at, have businesses been consulted directly about their thoughts? Because, I mean, one of my main concerns about making any decisions was the, was the very strong opposition that we got from so many businesses, much to my surprise, but from so many businesses.
Yes, businesses were consulted in coming up with what we have proposed today. Actually, we went through a couple of different drafts and did talk to some businesses about that. Now, there are people out there that I know believe they don't want to see any parking taken up, and that would even include some of the current spaces that are occupied by businesses that have patios out there as well, too. So of course, it's differing opinions amongst different businesses. But I think what we've come up here is a good compromise, for the most part. Again, we keep the street open, which was an absolute necessity for most businesses that we talked to, and we tried to minimize our impact on parking. And so we're able to shrink that down to about six parking spaces.
Okay. Commissioner Bush.
I, also, one of the issues I had with Broadway Central was that it really focused so much on, like, a few businesses that would be able to, you know, benefit from the closure of the street. Has there been any discussion about possibly extending this sort of parking to perhaps other businesses who might want, like on Main Street, or around the corner?
Yeah, that's correct, actually. And I'm glad you brought that up, because there, we wanted to bring forward what we know right now, but we are in talks with other businesses that have an interest in seeing further outdoor seating expansion. And so actually, a couple of them offhand that I know that we're talking to right now, we wanted to bring that back at a later date, though, is that still being flushed out.
Commissioner Alsager.
I like the idea that city staff was able to come up with a good compromise to keep the street open and to still have some seating.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Commissioner Bush.
Wow, I'm setting the record here, George. Another concern that was repeatedly brought up was issues with, you know, cleanliness of the tables, and that sort of thing, and as part of the plan to kind of address a, a cycle to, you know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, so we are going to add extra trash receptacles in the area. There's a few things, I think, that go into this. Extra trash receptacles will make sure that we do have staff paying attention to the area and regularly taking a look and making sure that we pick up the spaces. But also, a lot of the amenities that we're bringing in here would be very new, very attractive amenities. And there's just a general theory that when folks are in a nice space, they want to treat that very nicely. And so we're hoping that some of these very attractive amenities also, you know, keep people feeling good and feeling proud about the space that their community has.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the plan as forwarded. Second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, now we are at item 23, to consider a budget amendment for MERS contribution and fire truck replacement. Manager dissents.
Thank you, mayor. So staff is happy to report that the city currently maintains a fund balance that represents 35% of annual expenses, or $5 million, in the general fund. Staff has reviewed the financial viability of the city and is proposing that this fund balance be committed in order to stay in accordance with our fund balance policy. Stack recommends that the city maintain the current millage rate of 16.25 mills, which requires no action from the city commission. Staff also recommends that the city commission approve a budget amendment to allocate $1.2 million as a contribution to the MERS program as a means of paying down our unfunded liabilities, and assign $1 million to the fire truck replacement fund balance for future fire truck replacement needs. Once this is done, we'll have 21% of unassigned fund balance, which is above the 15% minimum. That is per our policy.
Are there any questions for clarification?
Yeah, my lack of knowledge in this area is huge. So I thought, but I mean, these things are expensive.
Yeah, so we are looking at over $3 million in total fire truck replacements going out the next handful of years here. And of course, our unfunded liabilities, as MERS reports to us, are in the several million dollar range each year. So they are expensive.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. We have reached item 24, which is to consider a resolution to authorize the issuance of 8.5 mil of general obligation bonds for the 8.5 mil of general obligation bonds for the water resource recovery facility upgrades. Manager descends.
And do apologize because we're going to continue talking about some of the expensive things here for the next couple of budget items. But at our December 13, 2021 meeting, the city commission approved a resolution declaring intent to issue up to $22 million in bonds to upgrade our water resource recovery facility. As we know, this facility is decades old that is in need of upgrades in order to continue on into the future. For completion of Phase 1 of the water resource recovery facility upgrades, Steph has determined the need for a bond issue of $8.5 million out of the 22 million. The city's financial advisor, Stephen Haduk, recommended to accept a proposal from local Isabella Bank for a below-market interest rate on the bonds being 2.77%. The direct financing with Isabella Bank will save approximately $105,000 in bond issue costs compared to a competitive bid bond sale. Steph is recommending approval of the attached resolution to approve issuance of those bonds.
Commission, do you have any questions? Commissioner Ake.
Well, I think it's a good idea since we are working with a local bank. You know, this is one way of engaging in the collaboration, you know, between the city and business or banks that we've been talking about.
I move to, I move to approve, but I also have, that rate is significantly low, actually. Is there some way in which we reinforce that or are they going to plaque or some, I mean, I don't know what I'm talking about here, but I mean, it's, it's a significantly nice gesture on their part. I mean, is there some way we acknowledge that?
I think there might be. Let me get with Steph, let me get with them and see what we can absolutely do. But you are absolutely right, it's a very significant rate. In, in talking with financial advisors who are active in the space right now, that rate easily could have been 3.25 to 3.5% in a competitive bid proposal. So, you know, it certainly hats off to our, our finance director, Marion Kornexel. It was her strategy they got this, this excellent rate and, and, you know, I'm sure leveraging our relationship with the local bank as well, too.
Excellent.
Would you like to make your motion again so I can second it?
I'll second the motion.
I move that we, I don't have it in front of me, but I move that we approve what we just discussed. I apologize.
I'll second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, we have come to our last bit of business. Item 25, to consider the award of the contract for the Phase 1 Water Resource Recovery Facility upgrades to RCL Construction Company Incorporated. Manager descends.
Thank you, Mayor. So now that we've approved the bonds for the project, we have to approve a contractor for the project. So the city received two bids for the Water Resource Recovery Facility Phase 1 upgrades. RCL Construction Company was the low bidder at $7,748,000. The Phase 1 work will include upgrades, the facility's grid system, digesters, retention basin, and septic receiving systems. The city received positive references from RCL, both on the references that they provided as well as from our engineers. And so Steph is recommending approval of the contract for the Phase 1 upgrades with RCL Construction Company.
All right, does the commission have any questions?
Okay, Commissioner Ake.
Yes.
You said that the city received favorable recommendations about RCL, actually. I wanted to find out a little bit about them. Are we, are you allowed to share some of the recommendations, you know, some of the things you heard or where they may have done some work?
Let me talk with Steph, and we might have to call upon Steph to see because I was not part of the conversation. We do have our Public Works Director, Jason Moore, here as well with his staff.
Yeah, Jason, hi. Just maybe a few of the recommendations and where they have done work. I don't see anything here.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, so we do have Tim Middleton on. If we can move him in, he would be able to answer that question for you.
Good question. Commissioners, I'm going to pass that over to our engineer, Brian Van Zee, who I believe is online tonight. The engineering firm actually did the reference checks on it. We're familiar with RCL, they've certain did, have certainly did a lot of work in the water, wastewater community. Their name is well-known, they're, they're people we've bounced off. And so I would be comfortable just in those associations alone in saying that that's a firm we'd be very comfortable with. They're reasonably local, they're from Sanford, which isn't quite in our community, but it's very close.
Okay. All right, we'll trust, I will trust what you have said.
Was someone else being moved in?
Oh, sorry, everybody, I had to find the unmute button. This is Brian Van Zee with Fishback Engineering Company. As, as a firm, we have worked with them in several locations around the state. Probably the closest one to you would be the city of Wasso. We've also worked with them, the Sagening Tribe. But, so, and they left us probably 50 different references, ranging in construction price from $500,000 up to $20 million. So they've always completed projects on time and within budget, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ronan?
Yeah, this is a bit obsessive, but it is nice to have that information. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Ake that, you know, that just, you know, that they're local from Sanford, that they've had all these projects done. And it's not a, I realize for Jason and your team, that's not a, we don't know anything about it. So, I mean, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, do we have a motion?
I have a motion and second, yeah.
We have a motion and a second now?
Or I move that we accept it. RCL?
RCL.
I'll second.
I think that was the discussion.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. All right, at this time, I will open the floor for commissioners and staff to make any announcements on city-related issues and new businesses. New business. Commissioner Bush?
I believe my daughter may have been one of the first customers of Sleepy Dog Books. I have not had a chance to check it out yet myself, but I think she's going to be spending enough money there for her whole family, so I'm really looking forward to that.
I'd like to remind the community that now that the weather is presenting itself well for us, remember that your fall leaves from last year cannot be raked into the street. You must bag them and take them to the recycling center. Recycling center is, I believe, on East River Road. Is that correct? I think so. East River Street, East River Road. You're also able to take tree trimmings and brush trimmings there for a small fee. The facility is open Monday through Friday from 8 till 5 p.m. and on Saturday from 8 Anything else you want to bring out? You guys must have had quite the weekend. You're so quiet.
Grading papers.
Yeah, grading papers. All right, now we're going to open for public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. Have we received any emails for public comment?
No, we have not.
Okay. If you wish to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address before you make your comment. If you're joining the meeting by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine if you're joining Zoom by phone. Once you are recognized, you'll be moved in so that you can be heard and make your comment. Please state your name and address before your comment. You'll be given five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Bree Morgenberg. For safety reasons, I'm not going to disclose my address. The first thing that I want to say is actually something that I didn't come here for tonight. But I, I heard a lot of discussion and a lot of public comment in regards to the marijuana use. And maybe I don't agree with all of that, but what I can tell you is very concerning to me is that some of the things that I've heard said from commissioners up here is that businesses are failing, that businesses bring revenue, and it's important to create more jobs. I'm a childcare provider. I actually looked into opening a childcare facility here in the city of Mount Pleasant. It's almost next to impossible. I'd love to sit down with all of you to review some of those, those items that are requirements that even the state of Michigan doesn't have. Daycares are hurting. Even if we create more jobs, people cannot work if there are not childcare facilities. I chose to actually move to Union Township. I have a waiting list right now with seven infants on it. That's just infants that are on my waiting list. So like I said, that's not actually why I came here to talk tonight. I did come to talk about something that's actually very personal and is very factual. It's not just my belief. Some of you up here, so just to get this out in the air, we have very different ideologies. I respect all of you. Some of you know that I've stood up very firmly for my own, and we all have the right to do that. But with that said, I'm going to go and resort to what the 420 man said, that no malice towards those we disagree with is something that we should all stand by. And I really confirm and love that he said that. With that said, I've heard it from the commissioners in regards to even the petty caps, for instance, that we're concerned about littering in our city, right? What I'm going to bring to your attention, if you want any more information, I'm glad to give that to you. At this time, to my knowledge, there is somebody that works for Parks and Recreation, okay, so Parks and Recreation, and I'm sure you can have your hand in this, that has had two PPOs on him in the last year. This is somebody that works at night in the dark and is supposed to keep people safe. He's had two PPOs on him in the last year, and he's supposed to keep people safe. That information can all be voided, I can give that to you. I'm asking you right now to look into the process of hiring and what you look into for background checks for people. Because if this person is working at Parks and Rec, he's also based at the police station. This is not okay, and this is not acceptable, and it's a huge safety concern. I know I loved listening to all the things that were going to take place in the parks. I love the parks, I love the parks. I won't be going to those parks this year. I do not feel safe. And I'm pretty sure that nobody's going to appreciate me exercising my Second Amendment rights and going for a jog with my gun on the side of me. I wouldn't do that, but I'm just asking you, please consider this, please think about this. I would love to give you more information, but it's not something that I'm going to share publicly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else I'd like to comment at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom? No hands raised. Yep, you can come up. Make sure that you state your name and address.
Kelly Fountain, 11 South Franklin. I'm just a little disappointed that we had some concerns brought up about childcare and churches, about where the pot shops might be. And we should, probably should have had more discussion on that instead of just said, well, well, too bad, we're just going to do it anyway. I'm now concerned that, you know, I have no problem with the marijuana shops, I have no problem with any of that. I have a problem with location and unlimited. Those are the two words. I want to know where the location is, maybe I don't want to buy a house there. Maybe I do, I don't know. I don't want my kid walking by, I just don't. So that's concern, especially around churches, that daycares, other things like that. They're, they're a business, so. And that's all I have to say. We probably should have revisited it, I think, instead of just, yep, we're doing it, so. Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alexander Swick, and I live at 1703 West Pickard Street here in Mount Pleasant. I have something a little less contentious for everyone tonight, something pretty neutral I think everyone can get behind. And if the city attorney is still with us, some very boring municipal precedents that I printed out today. My main concern is I would like to see the city do something about engine braking within city limits. I'm sure you've all got an email, I promise not to be a nuisance. That being said, this ties in very closely to an existing precedent that we have in Section 96 dot 01, public nuisances defined. Subsection 96 dot 03, noises prohibited. Section 7 is engine exhaust, discharge into the open air or the exhaust of any steam engine, stationary internal combustion engine or motor vehicle, except through a muffler or other device which effectively prevents loud explosive noises. Now, I've spoken with other officials at the city. I know I've spoken with Jacob at least a couple of times on this matter, and he forwarded this to the traffic council, I believe was a specific committee. They said that while that does apply to engine noise, something like a loud modified exhaust on a car or something of that nature, most literally, I would like to draw the committee's attention to a very similar code for the Village of Shepherd in their village code. They have actually verbatim here the exact same clause, 35 dot 010, prohibited noises, engine exhaust, so on so forth. We've already heard that part, but that is, in fact, verbatim what the city of Mount Pleasant currently has in their city code. I mention this because they have a very specific reference in a different ordinance, 20 dot 025, Section 1, Truck Traffic, Subsection H. Engine brakes, compression brakes, engine slash compression brakes will not be allowed in the village limits. For more information, see the noise ordinance, which was the aforementioned clause there. So I do believe that this is a significant enough issue for many people who live on Pickard, High, Isabella Mission, any of the main thoroughfares in town. I really think that a lot of our fellow citizens would appreciate a restriction in the use of engine retarders or jake brakes, as they're colloquially referred to. It's a very simple process. In fact, I actually have with me one more precedent, there's no more after this, I promise. This is the Michigan CDL Manual Handbook, and it states in very, very clear language that all retarders can be turned on or off by the driver, and because these devices can be noisy, be sure you know where their use is permitted. So I do believe that we have a very firm basis for moving forward on some sort of restriction within the city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward? Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to speak?
No raised hands.
All right, I'm going to close the public comment at this time and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no. We are adjourned at 9:07. Have a good evening, everyone.